Okay, welcome everybody to the May 2024 Bolivar Board of Education meeting. Good to see everybody here in person and greetings to those who are watching online live or archived later. We will begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
You can join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our commendations this evening and Mr. Ryan is going to start us off there.
Yes, over at BHS we have four FFA members. Congratulations to four FFA members for finishing fourth in the nation at the National Entomology. CDE at Charlton State University in Texas, so congratulations FFA. Thank you, Mr. King and Ms. Brown. Carson Shetman, Aubrey Cowden, Ashlyn Cowden, and Daya Patel. Athletic Celebrations, Misha Award, Sahara Adams, and Payson Reisner. Outstanding Athlete of the Year is Aiden Spatilla and Drake Durham. Congratulations to both of them, or all of them, I should say. Boys tennis, two doubles teams, Si Douglas and Seth Martin, Brody Campbell and Ben Tool. Both qualified for the state meet, also Bolivar qualified for the state team's state meet. So congratulations, Bolivar tennis team, boys tennis team. BMS in track, eighth grade students, athlete Ryland Stingers broke several school records this school year. Hundred meter dash, two hundred meter dash, long jump, and triple jump. He even re-broke his own record in the long jump and two hundred meter dash. So congratulations to Ryland. Additionally, the boys track team won first in state in the class three and forward divisions. So congratulations to all of our athletes, all their accomplishments, and our athletes.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. We do have one additional commendation. There was a bus accident that occurred recently and we had a high school student by the name of Madison Saylor. And Madison stepped up and assisted in the aftermath, if you will, assisting to help organize, to do what was needed to account for all the students and was just, showed an extreme maturity. And we wanted to give a special recognition to Madison Saylor for her assistance last week. That was last week during that situation that we had occur.
Yep, she was very helpful, helped us take down names. It was calming presence with the young students, so we really appreciated that.
Yeah, that's great, okay. Our next step is to approve the consent agenda. Again, consent agenda includes minutes, bills, and resignations, so we need a motion to do that. Mr. Goodman?
Second.
Second. Jillian has a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, employment.
We have two certified employment recommendations, Carrie Bliss and Rachel McQuarter.
All right, we have these two certified candidates. Need a motion to approve their hire.
So moved.
Second.
Mike Ryan with the motion and Ms. Hubbard on the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No classified recommendations tonight, but we do have two extra duty assignments. Zach Warwick for soccer, boy soccer assistant, and Zach Waters for high school assistant boys and high school assistant girls soccer.
Okay, we need a motion to approve these two hires. Dr. Goodman?
Second.
And second by Drew Legion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We have two substitutes to recommend to you tonight, who would recommend approval.
Mr. Ryan on the motion and?
Second.
Dr. Goodman on the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Okay, bond and fiscal planning.
Yes, we have Brent Blevins with Steeple is here and he will present some information in regard to our bond proceed resolution. And thank you again so much for your help. I know that things went official today, so we'll be glad to hear the results.
Yeah, thank you for that. Appreciate the opportunity of being here. First of all, congratulations on your successful bond initiative. Your community continues to support your district each and every year. Commend the administration and board on that successful election, so you can get some cool projects for your kids. We had a great day in the market. We priced your bonds today. Typically, we do with Bolivar, our investors like Bolivar paper, so that's always a good thing. A lot of that goes back to an underlying rating that we got through Standard and Poor. I will tell you that underlying rating process is a little bit grueling. I appreciate Dr. Asbill and his staff. He had to present a lot of information, data. He also got to go through about an hour-long, grueling conversation in regards to the boards and the district's policies, procedures, budgets, long-range planning. So SMB takes a deep dive into the district to make sure that goes into consideration committee for a grade, for an underlying rating. They also take a deep dive into your community. They look at your assessed value growth. They look at your median income, your household income, your sales of houses, your top ten taxpayers. They take a deep dive in your community and go to committee for a recommendation and decision on your rating. The district got an A rating, which is very, very strong. What that does is that goes on your official statement that goes out to investors. So when we pre-market your bonds, that official statement that has an A rating, investors can see this is very secure. It's a very secure investment for them. What that means is the more secure investments, the higher the investors pay for your bonds, which means lower yields, lower interest rates for the district. So that's a good thing. The district scored as high as you can in regards to your processes, board procedures, your fund balances, your long-range plan. Everything the district could control was scored at the highest level. So I commend the work that you've done here at the board. So as we went into the market yesterday and pre-market those bonds and in the market today, we were actually oversubscribed, got some bumps, which means some increases in prices. For the investors, this drove down your yields and interest rates. So I will quickly go over those numbers. I know you have a busy agenda to kind of tell you how that went. I believe you all have a copy of that with you right now. The first page is the sources and uses. You can see the par amount of bonds of eleven million. We had a re-offering premium of four hundred and sixty-five thousand, total resources of eleven million, four sixty-five, seven ninety-eight. So the deposit to the construction fund less all costs of issuance will be eleven million, three hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. So make sure you spend that thirty-five cents wisely on these projects. We have a closing date of six, four, twenty-four. So on June sixth, you will actually get those monies deposited in your construction fund. And I know you've got some projects ready to get started, so that's exciting. I will tell you that, as you all can imagine, over the last couple of years, the market has been all over the place. We've seen ups and downs and more ups than downs. I told Dr. Asbill today, when I called him about the final pricing, that he and I are going to take full credit. We picked a good day that we got bumps, but I cannot take that credit. We fortunately had a good day. The market's been really good the last two days and we've seen about five basis point bumps. So it helped with today's pricing. Again, I'd like to get credit, but we just got lucky. So it was a good day. We have four and five percent coupons on this. We have yields from twenty-one to, I'm sorry, from twenty-five to forty-four, from a three fifty-nine out to a four ten. Now, we do have a call date on this of ten years. So you say, what's a call date? This district has benefited greatly over the past several years on these calls. What a call date is, is it allows the district to come back in, what we call refund or refinance your bonds. So those call dates, the district can come back in then, look at the market at that particular time and potentially refund or refinance those bonds, therefore getting additional savings on your interest cost. We set that at a ten-year call. We let our syndicate desk, we've got about two hundred and fifty thousand investor accounts with about three hundred bond salesmen. So there's about three hundred and fifty people at Steeple that touched this deal, trying to get the lowest yields, highest price for the investor to get you the best rates. So we have a ten-year call on that. That syndicate desk looks at that. So the goal of that, the shorter the call, the higher the interest rate, because your investors are only guaranteed up to the call. So there's kind of a sweet spot on that call date to make sure we're getting you low rates on the short end and then the chance to then restructure or refund or refinance after ten years. So we've got a three, one, thirty-four call. So at that time, we'll come back in and look and see if this is saving dollars to potentially do a refunding to save some interest costs moving forward. Again, you have benefited from that in the past, so that's a good deal. The true interest cost that you received is a four fourteen with a bond yield of a three eighty-nine. So you'll pay over the twenty years, again, this is a twenty-year maturity. You'll pay between a three eighty-nine and a four fourteen. If you're never able to refund these bonds, it'll be a four fourteen. Historically speaking, that bond yield, you'll probably play closer to that bond yield of that three eighty-nine. I can tell you that's great rates. So you can see, if we go out and try to get a home loan or a car loan right now, that three eighty-nine to a four fourteen is very good. And a lot of that has to do with the great credit rating the district has. So congratulations again on that. You do have the cost of issuance, you've got a debt service schedule, again, the fours and fives. You've got a cost of issuance for bond council, underwriters, council, rating fee, paying agent, state auditor, and continued disclosure after those costs of issuance. Again, the deposit to the construction fund, eleven million, three ten, one forty-eight, thirty-five. So we're very excited about that. We never know with the markets, the way they've been the last several months, up and down, how it's going to go. So we're very pleased that you got the deal that you got. You got the proceeds plus a little potential extra for some contingency and some very, very good rates. So what you have on your agenda tonight is an action item to approve the resolution of the final pricing. We've got Sarah Granath here from Gilmore and Bell, who serves as your special tax counsel or bond counsel. So all the legal documents that you have, it's not my fault, it's hers. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on the numbers. I know Sarah can answer any questions that you have on the resolution that the board's approving tonight. I will tell you, as you are going through and looking, working with us, we never want to talk about just this issue. We try to look at long-range planning, which again was a benefit for the district when they did their rating call, that they had that facility long-range plan. We try to structure these bonds with a district the size of Bolivar. We know that you've probably got close to a million square foot under roof, as well as new construction, taking care of what your constituencies have already invested in. So we try to structure these to about every five to seven years, your district can come back in and do another no-tax increase bond issue with your current levy. So that is in place. Obviously, that's driven by your assessed value growth. I think when we first started talking about this deal, it was about eight million dollars. But due to assessed value growth over the last couple of years, that allowed the district to do eleven million. So hopefully, we continue to see, you know, moderate growth over the next few years and the district's in a great position in their debt service fund to do some additional facility planning down the road. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. Sarah would be happy to answer any questions on the resolution.
Questions?
On the ten-year call, are we obligated to refinance or if we like the interest rate, we can keep it, right?
Yeah, so the tick that I gave you, the three fourteen, is what we call the yield of the worst. So when the call date comes, if the current rates are not in a position for the district to refinance that or refund that, no. So you'll never pay higher than the four fourteen. The bond yield of the three eighty-nine is only if the rates are conducive at that particular time in ten years to refund those. So no, you are not obligated to refund. We'd only obviously make that recommendation if we can lower those yields and save the district money.
And Brent, you anticipate that we'd be able to do another no-tax interest bond issue? You said in the next five to seven years?
Right, so again, we try to, you know, we never want to be in a position that we call cook the school district. We don't want to come in and tell you guys to do fourteen, fifteen, sixteen million. It takes you out of the market for twelve, fifteen years. We want to make sure that we structure your bonds and your debt service fund balance and your facility planning, so that about every five to seven years, depending on that AV growth, the district can come back in and do another no-tax increase bond issue. Because as you know, you've got lots of facility needs and you do not want to be locked out of the market for twelve to fifteen years. You just need that additional debt service capacity, so that you can continue to do facilities. That may be sooner, that may be more, again, it just depends on that AV growth. So when we do a long-range plan for you all, we do two things that are very, what I would call, very conservative. Number one is we estimate higher interest rates and lower AV growth. We call it conservatively, but we also call it realistic. We don't want to give the district a number that's, you know, three million dollars, when really it's not. But at the same time, we don't want to give you a number that you're planning for that's really not realistic or too aggressive. So we try to be conservatively realistic. But we do want, how we put some contingency in there is number one, we estimate about five percent coupons on future issuance with about two and a half to three percent growth. So if you look back historically, CPI, which typically goes hand in hand with AV growth, also fluctuates with market conditions and couponing and interest rates. So when you, just like now, we've seen AVs grow up, right? But we've also seen interest rates grow up. So they kind of go hand in hand. During the Great Recession, when AVs were going nowhere, they were stagnant. That's when we saw interest rates get down into ones and twos, right? So they tipped it. Guess, high. Just to make sure that your planning, your facility plan is what we call conservatively realistic.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations again.
All right, we need a motion to approve the bond funding resolution with Steeple.
So moved.
So moved and second?
Second.
And second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you both very much for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a career ladder program summary.
Yes, Tim had another, so Tish is here, anybody?
Yep.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah.
Yes, Dr. Garber is usually Tish's psychic, but he's in Logan Rockville. At the semifinal district championships, so watching his daughter play soccer.
And it's halftime, zero, zero.
Come on, liberators. Okay, we're going to start off with just some highlights over the year. This is our second year. It's almost complete and it's gone very well overall. Currently, we're in the process of approving logs and getting those ready for payment in June. Ours need to be completed by Friday, May twenty-fourth, and that information will be compiled and sent to Central Office by June third. In looking at some of our numbers, we have a total of one hundred and thirty teachers participating. That's ten, ten more than last year. Five at stage one, fourteen teachers at stage two, and one hundred and eleven at stage three for career ladder. And our projected costs, district cost total for us, district, is two hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred. DESI reimbursement is three hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred, with the total cost overall, six hundred and four thousand, five hundred dollars. Hours that teachers have done, over twelve thousand, four hundred hours towards career ladder. We have seven hundred and forty, seven hundred, four hundred and forty hours were logged for student contacts, so direct contact with students. That was activities like tutoring, mentoring, or student enrichment, clubs after school, those types of activities. And then about four hundred, or four thousand, nine hundred and sixty hours went toward professional development and other activities or district initiatives.
So some of the activities that staff can utilize these career ladders are ours for. Of course, mentoring, tutoring, assisting students with post-secondary preparation, clubs, extracurricular activities, professional development, family student outreach. Clubs and extracurriculars, that can be everything from frisbee golf, chess clubs, speech and debate. We have Coach Cole at the intermediate school, who's hosted his second annual pickleball tournament. And we just, it's a great opportunity for kids to find clubs and activities that meet their specific needs. Gives that niche kind of opportunity to make those connections. We also have professional development for our teachers. We, of course, are a PLC school, so a professional learning community. Work that goes into that takes a lot of time beyond just what we can do in our normal day-to-day. So PLC work, letters training, which is the science, the reading mandate that the DESI has been working with. It is great training. I've had the privilege to go through it this year and it has been phenomenal. We have a lot of people doing podcasts and other personal learning to help support them individually. Probably the most listened to podcast for this year has been Sold a Story. If you've not ever listened to that, it's an interesting listen, for sure. It kind of goes hands in hand with what we've been learning in letters, so that has been informational for us. The Innovation Summit with Go CSD is always something that we are able to capitalize on with that partnership. And people can use those hours for that. Family and student outreach, though, I think is the number one thing that we have seen the benefit of. From our family nights to grandparent nights, we've just had a lot of opportunities for people to experience all the greatness that Bolivar has to offer. I think you're probably going to have to click play. So you can see, we've just had a great variety of nights. These are events that are hosted that are outside of our day. Team Read, getting to meet authors. Parents and grandparents getting to be in the building with their kiddos, doing activities. Miss Khan, taking kiddos to a clay contest. Just all kinds of different activities and outreach that are making connections in our school, but more importantly, with our community. The one thing I have seen as the chair, that I get to look at all the logs, is all of the ways that people are reaching and using their gifts and talents to make those connections with our community. From Ag Nights at BPS, we have some teachers who are very connected to our agricultural community and they have shared that love through those nights. And it has been phenomenal to watch. And so while we understand it is a big financial commitment, we think the benefit to our community is huge. And it all happens because our teachers are willing and able to put in the time. And so we thank you for the opportunity. Any questions that you all have about career ladder?
Do you know, I know that, I'm looking at the summary and I have to ask Chelsea too, but do you know if the match, the district match includes the retirement portion of that? Do you know if that?
I don't know where the retirement portion comes out of. I know it's a contributor to all of that, but I don't know if that's figured in or not. That would be a Tim question. I apologize.
No, 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 you're fine. We can follow up on that, just making sure on that.
Chelsea is saying no.
We pay retirement on it. I just want to make sure that if those numbers aren't included in these dollars. So they'll be slightly different. Other questions? So I'm going to present some information with you. You're not, you don't have to stand for it or anything, so just to the board. So we are already into the, the logs will be committed. We'll be getting. So we are already into the, the logs will be committed, we'll be getting, submitting our final report for this year's career ladder. Our application for next year is in, so we have that process started. Tomorrow is the last legislative day for Missouri, and so we should, barring something going terribly wrong, the budget should be completed and official and then sent to the governor, and we'll see some things. We've also had some legislative changes that have occurred, so with 727 and some things like that. So we are still kind of monitoring things financially. 727, SB 727 does set up some important future steps, which are actually very good for the district, and it's good for teachers, because it's going to mean that the base teacher amounts will be higher. So based on that, I have, would be asking that the board table any decision on career ladder for next year until the June meeting, till we see what the final numbers or any kind of legislative impacts are. And the reason for that is that I anticipate, so two years ago, we spent around 202,000 for the district match without retirement. This year, we're scheduled to spend about 241,000. We, I anticipate more people might have interest in that program again, but I'm starting to be concerned about what that fiscal amount is in that investment and what we might need to do as far as focusing those efforts on certain student programs within each building or what may have to be directly driven to the salary schedule for certified and classified staff. So we do, and last year, we were able to honor some hours of career ladder in June, so I would just respectfully ask that we table the commitment, fiscal commitment for next year's career ladder until June. That does mean that we'd have to let everybody know that, don't go logging a bunch of hours in June for career ladder. But at this point, I'm concerned that our fiscal investment for year two, three, and four on Senate Bill 727 tied to specifically salaries is something that we need to start planning for now versus waiting. And so I would really like the board to consider that as we get you some additional financial
Any comments or questions?
And Dr. Aswell, as we look at salaries, we'll have to look at our other staff, too, and their salary at the same time, correct?
Yeah, so we're looking at, when Chelsea presents here in a minute, we'll talk a little bit about the financial, what we've done, as you said, just steps alone, the health insurance benefit that we're paying for, and then retirement. And then what we're looking at is, okay, if we do a $250 base increase and then steps for certified, classified, and a 10 cent per hour increase on our classified schedules, what that looks like. And so when you start looking at that and adding those up, based on where we are with our current enrollment and then what the basic formula will produce, we kind of have to start really evaluating how much more investment above that will we be able to bring back in in basic formula dollars. We also are exiting all of our federal ESAR dollars. We will no longer have about $1,005,000 in offsetting funds for a lot of payroll and benefit pieces. So that transition, all schools will have that, but in our particular case, we want to, we really, my recommendation would be is to be careful that we don't overextend ourselves. If, if what 727 is going to establish, which is good for teachers, we also need to make sure that we're still committed to that for our classified staff. My concern is, is that if I'm, so I'm going to put it to you this way. If I'm wrong about our fiscal commitments and what our dollars, then I'll be wrong and you'll have additional dollars next year to contribute to salaries and benefits. If I'm right, and we do fund it, based on what we know today, the district will be in a different fiscal position, and I think it'll be more difficult for you and Dr. Methen to start looking at choices that you may have. Are we in dire straits? No, but we really have to realize that Senate Bill 727 puts certain benchmarks in of saying, this is where our base will need to be in year two, three, and four, and in order for us to continue that. But that's the teacher base. We still have to make a commitment to our classified staff, secretaries, paras, food service, all of those individuals. And that, that's a significant additional investment.
So you feel confident that at next month's meeting, we will?
Yes.
You'll be able to make a recommendation?
Yeah, Dr. Methen and I will have the preliminary budget, and then we will have specific recommendations in regard to career ladder or any additional things that may come out legislatively that say, hey, you will or will not participate.
Okay, yeah. All right, very good, thank you. Okay, moving on to administrative reports. I'm going to guess that Mr. Blair, Mr. Potter, Mr. Love, and Mr. Ash, welcome, Mr. Ash, good to see you, are going to tell us that they have nothing to add to their administrative report, but if they have something to add, they are more than welcome to come up and share. Hey, I got that right.
You did, yeah.
Am I, I don't see Sarah with us.
Sarah got sick. I did get a text that she is-
All right, just making sure I'm not missing her. Mr. Hines, do you have?
I'm good.
You're good on your end, okay. Mr. Pizzetti?
I'm not just good, I'm awesome.
Mr. Pizzetti is awesome.
I'm sorry.
Very good. Dr. Garber is gone, Mr. Pitts?
I have three very quick updates tonight. The first has to do with our content filter. In July, we are going to be able to initiate a new content filter called Bloxy. This was made available through the cyber grant that we were awarded, one of our larger grants, and so we can now have a subscription to Bloxy. We just ran a trial of that, and about 10 of our teachers participated in the trial. They loved it, they're very excited, and this is a big win for our district. In addition to a content filter, it also has classroom capabilities that lets our teachers be more involved in what our students are doing online, and also has a mental health component. It's a big win for the district. The second update is about the photography team. We have had team meet of both staff and students, and we have been working hard to review all of the bids and applications. The team has been great, some of them are here tonight, they've worked hard, I appreciate their contributions, and we should have a recommendation formally for you at the next meeting, Photography Services. Finally, another one of our grants is called the COPS Grant that we were awarded. It's another really good grant for us, and one of the things that we did with that, it allowed us to get some new radios, and 58 radios have arrived. We are still waiting on the FCC, but we did get good news from them this week, the needle has moved, and some of our frequencies have been approved. And so hopefully, that will be in place soon, certainly by the next school year. That's my report, if you have questions.
The radios you're talking about are handheld radios?
Yes, sir.
Most of those will be with administrators or in individual buildings, is that correct?
Yes, it's really the people that have them now, but it's a much better system, covers a bigger footprint, they're a lot better.
Allow us to communicate with buses?
Yes, it will. The bus channel can still be the same.
So will we have, so tell us a little bit about the capabilities of what our new system will have as opposed to what we have now.
Yes, it allows everyone to have a big channel, where before, we've had trouble communicating. The last system was a little bit clunky, they could never figure out where the repeater was, what it did. So this grant enabled us to get 58 radios that all kind of danced together the way we want them to dance.
Will, we have building-level channels, or we have private channels?
Yes. Each building, we could do however we want, but in my mind, each building can have its own channel. There'll be a private administrative channel. If there's an emergency, the superintendent will be able to hop on with the administrators and speak frankly and privately and confidently.
And traveling from this facility here, this campus, across town to the others?
Yes, that's been the biggest challenge with the existing radios, the ability to talk from building to building. But all, for example, we thought we had a repeater at the water tower. We unplugged it, didn't change a thing. None of the radios behaved any differently. But now we'll have two strong repeaters, and it would extend our footprint. At the last bus incident about a year ago, Ron?
Right.
It would have covered even down there by the pitchfork.
Gotcha. That's awesome.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Mike, could I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Could you, would you send the board kind of a overview of the content filter, the Bloxy thing, and how it works, and so we'd have a better idea of that?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, Paula, if you're interested, I have feedback from the teachers. I'll be happy to send that along as well, send it to the entire board, please do. I'll be happy to do that.
I'd be really interested, especially in the mental health component?
Yes.
And how that is, you know, are they, how are they doing that?
Yes, very happy to do that.
Okay, that'd be very good to know.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you for everything you did with the photography stuff.
Mr. Brayden, do you have any updates for us? You're good on your end? Okay, Dr. Wall?
Yes, I do have a couple of updates. What we really want to visit with you about tonight is, we're asking the board to approve a significant literacy adoption, and we wanted to visit with you just a little bit about that. First of all, to give you the why, why we're moving to a new literacy adoption, and I'm going to share some of that information. We know that Senate Bill 681 was legislation that had some requirements for the State Department as well as local districts in meeting the needs of young readers, and so we're really wanting to respond well to that. When we look at Senate Bill 681, one of the areas that they recommend is evidence-based literacy instruction, and that's what we're doing with our letters training. So we've got right now 42 teachers in year one letters, we've got 26 joining us for year two. That will have every teacher in our district trained in letters in pre-kindergarten or kindergarten through fifth grade, and then all special educators through eighth grade. So we're excited about that, that's going to be a component. But when we look at our current series, it's not well-aligned to those pieces. When we look at the focus on science of reading, it includes things like phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary and comprehension, morphology, syntax, and semantics. We do teach those components, but the series that we're currently utilizing is not explicitly aligned to those things, and so that is driving our need to purchase something that's going to better meet the needs of our teachers. They're getting trained in all of these resources, and we want to better meet those needs. So I have asked Angie and Heather to come up and share a little bit about our process. We had a really good process. These ladies have been instrumental in pulling together resources, come on, girls, and helping us with just this adoption. So they're going to talk for just a few minutes about what our process looked like in arriving at the series that we're going to recommend.
So we started with six resources as a leadership team, that our principals, assistant principals, Dr. Wall, Heather, and myself started with six resources. We narrowed that down as a leadership team to three resources, and once we narrowed that down, we chose teachers from every grade level, pre-K to fifth grade, as well as sped teachers and reading interventionists to be a part of looking at those resources and trying them out in their classrooms and giving us their feedback on how they thought it would align to our standards and how they thought it would look within our classrooms. So here was kind of our timeline. I mentioned that we, as the leadership team, narrowed it down from six to three. Then the committee met, we asked the three vendors to come in and present their program to our teachers, and then we narrowed that to two resources. We felt two of them really rose to the top. The committee looked at standard alignment, how well was it going to be used in the classroom to meet our PLC work. And then teachers taught lessons, they looked at assessments, they actually tried giving the assessments to students to see how well that worked. And then we collaborated with the two vendors on questions that teachers had and just getting more information from them.
So a lot went into our consideration in looking at these resources. So starting off with ed reports, our current resource does not meet expectations on ed reports. An ed report is a criteria review design that really has a sequential process of review that takes the resources through gateways. So one of those gateways is standard alignment, another is basically the foundational design of the materials and so on. So the two that we were looking at, Wonders and Benchmark, not only met all the expectations through ed report, but they were also DESI vetted and approved, so that was a big component for us. Another thing, like we've mentioned, was the science of reading, and so you can see in the graphic up there, that Scarborough's reading rope, and that's something a lot of our teachers are familiar with, it's coming from the letters training. But that rope really just shows all the different strands that go into a fluent reader, and so in the blue, you have those word recognition skills, which Dr. Wall had mentioned, the phonemic awareness, the phonics, the decoding. And then in the red strands, you have more of those comprehension pieces of vocabulary and literacy comprehension. So again, our current resource was lacking, especially in those foundational pieces, the blue strands, and so we really wanted a robust resource that would bring everything together in that. And so we also had a few other components that we looked for, authentic literature, a strong home and family connection, that was important to us as well. And then why Benchmark? And so really, as we narrowed it down from six to two to three, Benchmark is the one that rose to the top and was most explicitly aligned to the Missouri learning standards, and then it also provided that comprehensive literacy instruction. In a responsive classroom, we have whole group instruction, we have independent practice, small group, we have that one-on-one conferencing with students. And so with our current resource, again, lacking some of those components, we really were seeking out something better. And Benchmark provides a variety of resources to meet those structured approaches. And with that in mind, that also really drives at home with our PLC process and would wholly support that as well, because in the past, we've had teachers writing and rewriting assessments, rewriting units to have those alignment pieces, but now that focus could shift into more of the data analysis side of our PLC process, so that we are really focusing on where the students at, where can we put in interventions to have those students close those gaps, or where can we provide enrichment to those students. And so all those pieces were provided with Benchmark, and that's why we were recommending that today to the board.
Well, I forgot to mention, DESI has published an evidence-based resource list, Benchmark is on that list, and they've only adopted three, they have three series on that list. And of those, we really felt like Benchmark met our collective needs the best. Do you have any questions about the process we used or our desire to purchase this resource for our teachers?
And this replaces the Lucy Clark?
Yes, the units of study. We're going to be using that exclusively. We're keeping it at the, we're going to keep some of those reading components at the upper elementary, because they're still relevant, but right now, we're piecemealing a lot of different things to make it work. We've got to build some foundations, we've got-
Patterns of power.
-Pegarty, patterns of power. This is going to allow us to put our energy into one comprehensive resource, and then we'll supplement if we need to. No resource is perfect, but we feel like this one's going to help us be a lot more comprehensively seated in one resource. So we're excited about it.
Sounds like you helped put a lot of work in this.
They did. I have to commend these two ladies, they did a lot of work. Teachers utilized the resources in class, they taught lessons with those resources, they took a standard, and they went all the way through both resources with one standard to see how well we were meeting that standard. It was some time and work on teachers' parts as well, but it helped us land, I think, in a really good place. Okay, no questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm good.
Oh, you're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, we are moving on then. Under Board Governance, Ms. Hubbard, you have inside knowledge, extensive time spent with the MSBA, and you're going to present to us a request made by, it sounds like, a very qualified individual.
As you all know, I'm currently a candidate for Vice President for the Missouri School Boards Association Board of Directors. In the most recent April election, the person who was going to serve as our president-elect was not re-elected to her position on her board, and so that created on the Board of Directors and the governance team a vacancy in that position. position. And so according to MSBA bylaws, we can either have the Board of Directors select that next person or there can be nominations from the floor at our June meeting or summer meeting. And to make sure everything happens the way it's supposed to, each of the candidates who have put their name to consideration need, um, letters of support from at least three of the Missouri School Board Association districts. And, um, so, and it's not necessarily an endorsement of one candidate, it's just saying we support electing a president-elect from the floor instead of letting the board elect them or appoint that person. Um, and so I, because I'm on the board, said that I would bring this to our board and ask if out of our district, if we would issue letters of support for Latonya Williams and for Shelley Mantel. They're the two people who are both running for that president-elect position. And so that's, I'm just here tonight to ask if the board would issue letters of support. Sheila has a sample for Ron to sign that say that we support electing or we support the candidacy of Latonya Williams and Shelley Mantel for president-elect of the Missouri School Board Association.
Now to clarify, are there more than those two?
No, just.
No, it's just those two, okay.
Right, and our constitution, right, allows any board to support any number of candidates.
Sure.
But the point is that we're supporting this and we're supporting this process.
The process.
The process.
Yes.
And the candidates, they're both excellent candidates.
Yes, and I've spoken with you and you speak highly of them and feel that they would.
Yeah, both very accomplished.
Yes, yes.
And dedicated to public education. So.
Yeah.
Because this is really just a, let me go ahead and make this, this motion. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
So I would move that our board, um, write a letter of support for Latonya Williams and Shelley Mantel for their candidacy for president-elect of the Missouri School Boards Association.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
For reaching out and.
Thank you all for participating in the process.
Yes, in the process. Appreciate that. Okay. Moving on to strategic planning, district financial planning.
Chelsea's going to start with a couple of financial updates and we'll kind of then team it on a couple of things.
Okay.
So I'm going to start with the fund summary page that I have with the graphs at the bottom. I wanted to let you guys know that we did receive our final payment on the hail claim this week, so that we'll be able to get closed out. When reviewing this graph that I provided you, you'll notice that there's three highlighted sections. That's where the debt payments occur. Those will occur in August and September each year and then usually February and March. You will notice that this year I did go ahead and pay both the February/March payment in February, so that does cause that little bit more of a difference for that year, for that timeframe. It is normal for districts to have a low time in September, October and November because they don't really get their local tax dollars till December and January. I will start providing you guys kind of graphs at the bottom that I have provided here. That will show you just how it kind of changes each month. Bolivar is more state-funded than local-funded and so you'll kind of see as the dollars come in, um, that graph will change. And then as expenditures, you guys will notice that our salaries and benefits, they take up to seventy percent of our budget typically. So we spend a large portion of our monies on the salaries and benefits of our employees.
And one of the things that this one will change is when you have May and then when you have June financials, June financials will actually include June, July and August payroll because all of our employees are on that twelve check system. So first live checks of the next fiscal year are scheduled for ninety-seven percent of our employees is September is the newest check. So we'll actually run Aug, uh, excuse me, June, July payroll all in June. So all of a sudden, this, you'll look at this and go, wow, those percentages changed a lot. It's because you'll have three payrolls coming all out in June.
Does that include summer school also?
Summer school, do we, are we paying that in July?
Summer school's in July.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. And then June, you'll also have your career ladder, any kind of PDC mentor or mentee, those also come out in June.
Questions on this? Is this kind of, we felt like this will give you a monthly and then the next piece will be is that we'll start doing this. So you'll, you'll have this, okay, year-to-year comparison so that you're always going to be able to go back and look at some trends of saying, okay, revenues, expenditures, are those similar to what we've had in years past?
And I did want to make sure that I did pull the insurance. You'll notice it in the blue, them below, so those aren't included in the numbers above. I have separated those.
The 2022 hail claim is, was a significant hail claim. It's a little over three million dollars worth of, and so we did not want that to look like, um, you saw it as additional revenue or expenditures because it's not normal that we would have that. Chelsea, if we could move to your packet, let's talk a little bit about some salary estimates. So that's your play setting. You have a document that has kind of three green stripes. What we did there was we looked at current schedules, which are, we have a certified schedule and then we have a classified schedule. Our classified schedules are hourly, so we'll start talking about step only. It's a little different than the certified, but it's because it's a, it's a per-hour increase. So we know that if we were to just allow steps only for the certified and classified, it's about $285,000. Our current health insurance benefit investment is $150,000. And then if we look at the retirement cost increase to those increases, it's about forty-five. So it's about $485,000 of investment for payroll changes for next year with just steps only. If we were to raise the base, and we're going to look at two different base things. One is a $250 increase to the base for certified and then a ten cents base increase. So all of the classified salary schedules, so let's say, I'm not going to name any of them, let's say that one of them is the base is 1350. So that would be going from 1350 to 1360 is what we consider a base increase. And then you get your experience step as well, which most of our classified salary schedules are like 26 cents per hour is an experience step. Our experience steps for the certified are like, is it 900?
It goes four, six and nine.
Four hundred, six hundred, nine hundred. So in that particular case, whether you take the 250 base or a 10 cent base increase to classified, health insurance, retirement, that's about $665,000 of additional budget that would have to be contributed to those raises. Other items on that, Chelsea?
Then now, these numbers, these don't include athletics or activity stipends and they don't include career ladder expenses as well.
If you go to page two, this is just a general fund summary and Chelsea, if you can kind of lead us through some of that.
Yes, so, um, we're going to show where we started in our fund balances as of July one this year. I have our estimated revenues and expenditures from our budget this year in there and where we're expected to kind of end. And that's before any of our transfers or our teacher fund transfer that we have to do at the end of the year for our fund two. And so we have some options that we've put over to the right. So we have option A, which is where we take all of our SIR dollars this year and then, which is about a little over 2.3 million that we have left. And then option B would be a fund for transfer of just 600,000 versus the full fund transfer. And then we've also done option C, which is both of those, which is taking all SIR and a $600,000 transfer. And then option D is just doing SIR and no fund for transfer. So you'll kind of see how it shifts our unrestricted fund balance. If we did take our full fund for transfer, um, it would drop our unrestricted fund balance down to 14.88 percent and we ended around 19 percent last year. So with each of those options, you'll kind of see what we're roughly expected to end in our unrestricted fund balance.
We will, Chelsea and I will be working with Dr. Methen as we start, because what you'll do in June is you'll have to approve a preliminary budget, which is basically, for us, what we try to do is say ending becomes beginning. We do the tax rate hearing in August, so there's some additional financial information that comes in. And then you have your, your official budget document is presented to you in August as well. We know some of our current trends. We know that legislation will be passed and then tomorrow's the fiscal budget, so we start putting things together. You'll also be approving salary schedules in June, so that also impacts this particular piece, but this gives you a guide of what we're looking at. Right now, option D is really what Chelsea and I are focused on. We would look at option D because if you look back in the budget document and look at your fund for balance, we've been able to make full transfers here recently, which allows us to have some fund for balances that we have not really ever had before. And so at this particular case, we, we think that option D would allow you the best starting point, um, that still allows you to start making some decisions about where you're going to be and what, what the fiscal options might look like next year. And then page three, Chelsea?
Page three is going to be just fund for. It's going to summarize what we've had each month revenue expenditure-wise and it's going to show you where we are as of right now. So as of April 30th, we had about 3.6 million left in our fund for account.
I'd like to draw your attention on fund four. So a couple of things that we, we anticipated, but the, the way the billing comes with the scheduling. We have HBAC project, the train project. That has already, in essence, started, so there's two, there are two payments that we'll be in. Those will eventually be reimbursed once we get our bond funds, but we, we will pay that out of fund four and then eventually that will be reimbursed once you get the bond funds back in the account. But we had to, we had to go ahead and initiate the HBAC upgrades and get that on the schedule. So you will see by next month, a little difference between what we're projecting as our fund balance and the actual fund balance. And that's because we have a little over a million dollars worth of HBAC that we're pre, that we're paying just to get that scheduled and equipment ordered and those type of things.
And on the bottom, you'll notice I kind of highlighted some of the, the big pieces that we get for revenue, classroom trust, our, of course, our insurance recovery and then the lease purchase that we ended up closing out in December. And then, of course, the larger expenditures that we have for a district. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Chelsea.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to facilities and operations.
So Chelsea presented some good information to you and I just, I hate to be the, you know, oh, well, bummer. Well, we, unfortunately, um, the hail damage of April of 2022 has come back in April of 2024. So we did have, April 1st, we had some hail damage at the high school. We had some significant damage on this campus as well with one of our storage, maintenance storage buildings and then with some athletic equipment, some track equipment. So it appears that we will have a insurance claim on portions of the high school and its potential, it will have portions of the intermediate school that will also be impacted by that hail and wind issue. The most damage that we've had is on the, the high school auditorium. So it did delaminate or the TPO membrane. And then the wind came after the hail and so it kind of, in essence, it, it blows air up underneath the TPO and it, it looks like a big balloon. And that caused several different leaks and so we do have some, some issues there. We did remediate it. We've been working on that and we remediated that internally. We already have the quote out for roofing companies to present us proposals. Those are due the 29th of this month. So we'll, we'll be working on that particular piece first and then we will have the storage building roof over here on this campus. And then we should have the roof assessment for the remainder of the high school roof and the intermediate. We should have that pretty soon as well. So, um, the weather patterns really over the last three, four years have been much different and they're causing some significant damage that we're just going to, we're trying to work through, but we'll, we'll get it addressed and loosely, Dr. Methen will have our best interests. So we, we are working on that, so. Questions on the roof for the hail damage? Okay. Wanted to, oop, never mind, that's on the next item. My apologies, getting ahead of myself.
Okay, we're good to move ahead?
Yes, sir.
Okay, under review and discussion, Liberators R1.
So Dr. Methen and I have been working on a variety of different components there. We're, we're walking facilities. We're scheduled to do some more walkthroughs over the intermediate next week with Brooke Campbell. We're trying to get some things kind of coordinated. We are also, I put it your setting, um, we are almost complete with a information. We wanted to be, let you be aware that we had continued to advocate for some early childhood childcare programs. We believe that we will be able to continue some of our partnership discussions with OTC, allowing for some career pathway and some real-world learning pieces. We want to thank Senator Huff, Representative Stevens and Senator Crawford and Governor Parson for thinking about us and looking at what we can do to be a role model for not only grow your own in early childhood education, but what we could do to create some career pathway options for childcare. We also believe that this is going to open up some potential night class locations for a number of people. Right now, this would potentially, we're working through the final phases of that, but it looks like we will have secured $3 million to focus a classroom expansion. And so we're going to be working on that here the next couple of weeks, trying to finalize that, but we wanted to bring that to your attention. It's still not completely done, but we're working hard to finish that up. And then Dr. Methen and I will be meeting with OTC in June. We also believe, and Dr. Methen and I have already met with CMH, Mr. Calhoun. He has been very supportive about additional programs that they may want to partner with us on. This also should lead to some good partnerships, OTC, A+, Missouri State with some teacher head programs, pathways for paras, so we're, we're pretty excited.
What a fantastic opportunity.
Yeah.
Absolutely fantastic. Well, we would like to thank our representatives at the state level and Governor Parson for thinking about us and a partnership with all of the entities that you mentioned and opportunity with OTC is just amazing.
I, I want to also, we, we still have some work to do, don't get me wrong, and it won't be a, you know, up and operational by August, but our intent, and we, we, we believe that the governor has been very focused on this, we intend to open this up to our Polk County neighbor schools, halfway Humansville, Marion C. Early, Pleasant Ho, Fair Play. We, we want them to be able to access this facility and our partnership with OTC. We believe that that's going to be really valuable to them and so this is, uh, this is good for Polk County. We're just eager to be able to host that.
Absolutely. It's fantastic.
Don't let us down, Dr. Methen. No pressure.
Fantastic start. That's great news. Thank you for sharing. Okay. Moving on to MSBA, 2024 A-Policy EHBD.
So this is still in the review section. Normally what we would have in your MSBA policy, you'd have this for 30-day review, then we'd move it to action. We, we're leaving it here in review and Mike, would you like to give any updates on that? We are leaving it here in review, and Mike, would you like to give any updates on that, please?
We have a working group working on this potential policy for us. We've had meetings even this week with Morne, and then another district up north who is a leader in AI, and so our goal, there are lots of layers to this. We want to make sure it's the right policy for us, the right stakeholders, the right stance, and we are working on this policy, and so that we can make a recommendation to Dr. Asbill and to you that fits our district perfectly. That's where we are, sir.
And we're using our tech committee administrators, then we've got the other schools. Did I miss anything?
No, sir.
Okay. And this policy is specific to artificial intelligence.
Right.
And all schools are going to be, you know, kind of faced with that, but it's also one of those things where you can't, you can't just block it. That's just not really an option.
Takes me back to our MSBA Fall Conference that we, many of us attended, and one of the speakers, she spoke about this and had some good information for us and getting ahead of it and addressing it, and thank you, Mr. Pitts, for spearheading that and trying to dial in what's best for all of her. That's very important. Dual credit agreement with MSU.
Jason, come on up, Mr. Blair.
Did that information get that back?
Go ahead and hand it out.
Okay, perfect. Say, just, I'll get back.
Thank you.
As you know, this year was the first year we really had a, what I would consider a full partnership with MSU on dual credit across multiple courses. This is just kind of a highlight, year in review, if you will, of our partnership with MSU. This includes 11 courses across seven different instructors. 86 students were served as far as taking, and again, this is just through Missouri State, 530 total credit hours, and an estimated tuition savings of $120,780 for our students versus the full pay. We're looking at expanding that relationship further next year. Specifically, we currently offer English 110. That'll be expanded to English 110. I believe it's English 111, so students will be able to get their full six hours of English through MSU when they leave. The other gap that we've seen with Chem 116 is a great option, but some of you that have went through the college ranks know that depending on your major, different chemistries may be required, so next year we'll actually be offering two separate dual-credit chemistries. I believe that'll be Chemistry 115, which will serve a little more of our students that might be going into the medical field. I think I've got those straight, and then Chem 116, which would be more of the general chemistry that would be required across all majors. So be glad to, again, this is just kind of a quick synopsis of what our partnership with MSU looked like this year. Be glad to take any questions about that if you have them.
Mr. Blair, we do have, and got some information from OTC about some new partnerships there that we might be able to expand, is that correct?
Correct, and we are looking at those. And I think you all realize, with the dual credit, it's certainly not as easy as just waving your wand and saying, hey, we're going to go here. It's a big ask on our instructors because that, I mean, especially with the MSU curriculum, I know our math instructors, it's been a big lift because they're basically rewriting that curriculum. OTC, we're working with them right now across a couple of different things. Dr. Asbill's been good. We just had some, I don't know if you call that legislation policy change with legislation, would that be the correct?
With higher ed.
Yeah, from higher ed, so we're working with OTC right now on some other courses as well, so.
And these courses that we're offering are also Core 42-type courses, I believe, is that correct?
Yes.
And the reason that we needed to make sure that they were Core 42, could you please explain that?
They'll transfer to other universities, so they'll take our credits, and if you're not a Core 42 school, there's no guarantee. It might go in as an elective credit instead of the math credit that you've taken, and that's important for our students.
Yes, it is.
And one of the reasons, again, like, chemistry's a perfect example. If we're going to sell students or offer students a chemistry, we want to know that depending on their major, that is going to transfer in as a chemistry credit. So Erica Cox, who's currently doing it, Isaac Hansen will be taking that next, over next year, have been very good about vetting through the students and their intended majors, and again, plans can change, but to the best of our ability match those courses up.
How many dual-credit classes are we doing with SBU? Are we doing any?
We are currently, this year, American History, Government, Computers, which that relationship will likely be over above all else, and Biology. Those are the three left.
Are we thinking about moving Biology?
The, and I'm probably about to give up, so I've worked with Coach McCullough, Mr. McCullough quite a bit. We would eventually like to offer Anatomy as a dual credit. We can do that. The problem is the OTC, well, and MSU and all the universities want to take that Anatomy in as basically a science elective. They don't want to give a true Anatomy credit, so we've held off a little bit on the Biology because we would obviously like to, and Mr. McCullough has been working with OTC quite a bit this year. We would like those to go as a package deal. Obviously, for him, that makes a lot of sense. I just don't know as though it's going to be possible, and we're looking at different options. I'm hoping Dr. Asbill mentioned this new partnership. That might open a door to that, because we would like to be able to offer our students, okay, you can get Biology and take that in as your general ed Biology, but if you're looking at going into a medical field or a veterinary field, whatever that field is, then this will transfer in as an Anatomy. So that's one of the reasons we paused on Bio just a little bit, because we would like those both to sync up and be with the same higher ed facility, whether that's OTC, MSU, wherever that is. It would just make way more sense for him and the students, because a lot of those students will be doing that. That would be their track would be dual-credit Biology and then Anatomy if they're going into that field.
It's important.
Jason will be attending, I think you're attending the June meeting?
Correct.
Yep.
June meeting.
It's with OTC, so we're talking about some of the, trying to hammer out some of those.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet.
Moving on to action items.
So we have, we're getting ready to kind of start the gambit of action items here, so our first, let me make sure I check the motion sheet, should be, we would like to recommend professional design services with Paragon Architecture for $444,000. That incorporates the intermediate school classroom addition, the intermediate school bathroom addition, and the BES classroom expansion.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mike.
Second.
Seconded by Paula. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Our second one is also for professional design services, but it is with SAP Design, another architectural company. And that scope of work is the agriculture education building and remodel. That scope of work is for $135,000.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Dan.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
The district currently has RFQ invitations out, and this is the official notice. We have ads in the paper for construction management at-risk services, so the district will be accepting requests by the end of this month. We will review those. We will interview. There's a process that has to occur, and then we hope to be able to bring you a recommendation at the June board meeting for a construction management at-risk firm. They will assist the district in working with the design teams and Dr. Methan to look at all of our projects, look at gross maximum pricing and potential options of how to use the dollars the best with each of the projects. So we would just, we would appreciate the board's approval of the construction management at-risk service RFQ request.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mike? Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We utilize speech-language therapy services. Some of those are virtual services, and we are recommending Therapy Log as a provider for this agreement. We would recommend approval.
Okay. Do we have a motion to go with Therapy Log?
So moved.
So moved by Paula. Seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We do employ our own speech-language paths, but we also do have an agreement with an individual as a contracted service. We would recommend that agreement be renewed for the 24-25 school year with Michelle Parsons.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Dan, seconded by Jill. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
You have received building-level handbooks for the 24-25 school year. We did have a couple of questions come up, and so building principals are ready to answer any questions that you may have on those.
I'll go ahead and start. I had some questions about whether our policy manuals were compliant with state statute regarding bullying and everything that's by law required to be in a student handbook, and I was able to reach out to Jason and Ben and discuss that a little bit with them.
Guys, any feedback on that? I mean, so the policy is compliant with the law, and then the handbooks are the guide to the policy. Any adjustments or anything, or you guys? I thought Ben was going to forget about standing up there.
I wasn't. I was going to turn around and remind him, hey, we need to go stand up. No, we've been collaborating. Essentially, we need to put more of our policy detail in our handbook, and so it'll look a lot, it'll be very aligned with the high school.
Just to give you an idea, I did check with our six other conference schools. A lot of times, when you look at student handbooks, you base that on what your neighbors are doing, what other good schools are doing. You don't try to reinvent the wheel. Three of them have a listing almost identical to what this high school currently has, where they detail what bullying is, and then just reference that policy. Is it JFCF? I may have, is that right?
JCFC.
JCFC, I think that is right. So three of them just simply reference the policy very similar to the way the high school is. Three of them reference the policy, and then at the back, you know, of the manual also list that full board policy in the handbook as well. So that would be an easy fix. We will, me and Ben talked, after the question was raised, we're going to make sure our policies read the same, as they should read the same anyway, so there may be an adjustment, slight adjustment to the middle school handbook on that, just so it coordinates with the high school handbook.
Is there not a mandate for intermediate school, or is it?
It is all handbooks.
All straight, all the way through.
Yep, so that is maybe something for VPS and BIS, too.
So what we're asking, we're going to, we're not going to ask you to vote on those. We'll make some edits and some links to our current policy within the handbooks. We'll let Ben and Jason kind of lead that with leads, and then we'll have revisions to you for approval for the June board meeting.
And would, before we do that, a reference, I talked to you a little bit about it, Dr. Asbill, simply referencing that policy would meet that standard, correct, as far as police board policy?
Yep, there's two parts. We can reference it, and then because we post those online, we'll get with Braid, and we can actually link it, so all they have to do is click on the link, and it will take them right to our board policy.
Oh, that's nice. Oh, that's, can we do that with other board policies that are referenced in the handbook?
No, we don't do that with any others. No, I'm just joking. Yes, we can do.
Talk about it.
We would just need, and just set the PDFs up so we make sure that we have active links before we post to the website.
Sometimes it can be hard to find that board policy manual from the website, so.
We do reference several in our handbook. I think Ben does as well. Yeah, we have several references, especially as it pertains to student discipline.
Right, right.
And I think as a district, on our website, we have the option for a student, a parent, any concerned person to click the link to submit a case of bullying if they have witnessed it or have, and I believe that's all electronic and easy to do anonymously or without others knowing, and we'd also discuss putting that link to the bullying report, the digital bullying report in the handbook, too.
Oh, that's a good idea.
That sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, it really does.
That was my idea.
Good job.
You mean Dr. Garber?
Yeah, Dr. Garber.
Good, good.
Yeah, thank you all for your attention to that.
Thank you, guys.
Next is a counseling service agreement. We have had a partnership with CMH where they provide additional counseling services, and this would renew that agreement for next school year, and we would recommend approving the counseling service agreement with CMH.
Before we take a motion, I might, no, no, no.
Segue.
Okay. So often, a school counselor, when somebody hears the word counselor, you know, our school guidance counselors are asked to assist with students to levels beyond their time and training capacity, wouldn't you say? And this relationship is great, and it allows our school counselors to, I guess, do their primary responsibilities and allow those students to get some extra services during the school day, and it's a win-win.
That is correct.
Absolutely. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the counseling agreement with CMH?
So moved.
Jill, and seconded by Dan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
We also have what's called a Navigator Agreement. The Navigator is a program that we started with CMH. It places a person on campus, and then they can go to any of our buildings. They have a backpack that's connected to the network, and it's linked with CMH, and so they can facilitate telemed visits for our students and/or staff. And so a student can come into the nurse's office, or the Navigator can go to a teacher's room during their conference or planning period or those type of things. So we're trying to bring more access to our students and/or faculty and staff, bringing that to them. Our previous Navigator Agreement has had some certain fees tied to it. We are very appreciative of CMH. They have decreased the fee structure to about $5,000 for the Navigator, and then our nurses have a grant. Mindy Owens is facilitating that. We're going to use $5,000 of that $15,000 grant that will actually pay for the Navigator services. It allows us to continue that service this next year, where we would, may not have been able to without these funds. So we would recommend approval of the Navigator Agreement with CMH.
So moved.
Motion made by Drew. Do we have a second?
Second.
Paula? Paula with the second. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I will give a brief athletic update. The girls are tied 1-1 going into the second overtime. So we've got a, we've got a close one going on down there in Log Rock, so.
The next one is for athletic trainer services. We did go through a review of those services. Traditionally, there are CMH, Cox, and Mercy. Through that review, we are recommending our athletic training services stay with CMH. We are also recommending a three-year agreement with CMH, and they have agreed to that, and we're working out the final details of that agreement, but at this time, we would recommend the athletic training services with CMH. with CMH agreement, and it would be for the next three school years, and it's a July 1 start.
Okay. We have a motion for the CMH Athletic Training Agreement.
So moved.
Dan, and a second?
Second.
Seconded by Paula. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
One business item, but it'll actually be two, uh, motions for you on the next one. So we have, um, we, really every two years, review transportation services. We consider transportation services, uh, contracted, and we have what's called regular transportation services as well as special transportation. Uh, there are two different vendors in regard to that, so for the first one, we would like to recommend Lockhart Transportation for our special transportation.
Okay. Do we have a motion for Lockhart Transportation?
So moved.
Mike? The motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
Jill, on the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
And then, uh, we were looking at regular, and unfortunately, we didn't receive any bids on reg-, no, I'm just joking. They're in the back of the room, and Alvy just went white, so. Uh, no, I want to, uh, point out that we did receive a, a bid from Raines and Martin for regular transportation services, and we would, uh, we would be recommending, uh, regular transportation services, and that is also a two-year agreement.
How many, how many years have, have we had a?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. Thirty-three years.
You don't look a day over 35, Russ.
He gets younger by the day.
So what, driving a bus will do?
As long as Alvy can keep them in line.
Takes years off.
I'll make that motion that we, uh, accepted.
Mr. Ryan makes the motion for Raines and Martin, and Drew Leegan on the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
So I'd like to point out that we, um, you've approved a couple of different agreements, but, uh, with, um, our partnership with CMH, our partnership with, uh, um, Mr. Lockhart, our partnership with Raines and Martin, we really, uh, we're really very fortunate. Um, they've, they've invested in, in a lot of time and effort, and they are mindful to align with some of our, um, particular goals and fiscal needs, and so really appreciate those relationships, and I enjoy working with Russ. It's reliable to believe, enjoy working with him, but, uh, him and David are very good to work with, and when we have questions, um, Russ meets with our principals probably on a daily, if not weekly, basis, and then he and I are always checking in. We're able to get information to Braden if we have a, a flat or a delay or whatever, and so it's just, it's just really a great working relationship that we have with Lockhart and Raines and Martin, so really appreciate, appreciate what you guys do, and, and, you know, with my transition, I, I, I'm glad to be able to say to Dr. Methan that you're in good hands, and I appreciate it.
I second that. Thank you, guys. Appreciate all you've done. Okay. Are we moving on to copier service?
Yes, so, uh, we, uh, also, it's up for copy services, uh, bids, and so we, uh, did go through the review process. We ended up having two proposals. Uh, Mr. Pitts has finished that review of copier services. Um, we looked at a, a 36-month agreement, a 48-month agreement, and a 60-month agreement. Um, right now, what, uh, Mike, you'll have to help me out on the pricing and stuff, so if you want to head this direction. We are with C-, is it called CPI?
Yes, sir.
Copy product?
Our current vendor, yes.
Is our current vendor, and we're recommending them again. Um, there is about a, uh, what is it, about $500 difference between the 48 and the 60-month agreement?
That's correct.
So it's about $6,000 per year, uh, difference in moving from a 60-month agreement to a 48. When we look at the services that we have and the fact that we'll be having new machines, uh, we are going to recommend the 60-month agreement to you. Um, it is only slightly higher with the additional add-ons than what we currently pay.
$71, and that is new equipment.
Yep, so, uh, a fairly good agreement for us, and then they've been a good partner for us, so we would recommend CPI. Um, and then Mike, uh, with your approval, once you approve this, Mike and I will engage in the, the final contract negotiations on the copy machine agreement, as to do with service, the, the per, per-page count and the tics of color versus black and white, those type of things.
Are we seeing a decrease in copies in the digital world we live in? Where, what's our district seeing? Do we have a trend? Is that?
I, I, I hope there is. I, I don't, I haven't really looked at it, Ron, to, to compare year to year, five-year to five-year, but, uh, it seems like we still do use too much paper, and I wish we used more things like PDFs, frankly.
Now, we do, uh, your new, uh, resource, we are purchasing the consumable resource. Which should, uh, well, it, I say should, I, I don't know that, but it, it should.
It won't reduce.
And reduce the amount of consumables that we currently have to drive out of our print shop.
Ourself.
Yeah, so that should help, and then those will just be, you know, basically shipped to us, and we provide those within the classrooms, and that'll take, so we hope to see a reduction in consumable runs for, um, primary, intermediate. That, that's where that resource will be used, right?
I know at the high school years ago, when we got Chromebooks, that, I don't know what the numbers actually were, but I can promise you, number of papers copied decreased as teachers became more proficient at digital lessons and assignments, et cetera.
Mike, why don't we go ahead and ask them, uh, when we meet with them, to just do a, a, a five-year usage report on each machine by building, and then Julie with the print shop is running some reports on, uh, counts by job or building that she does when she does this. So we'll bring those to you. If we can get those done by June, we'll bring those to you in June. That's a great question. We can take a look at that.
You know, Dr. Aswell, we've also talked to Tim Fazetti about doing some digital portfolios. I know there's lots of copies run in athletic programs, um, at the end of the season with statistics and, and pictures and that kind of thing. So we've talked a little bit about maybe doing a digital folder and sharing that with athletes, and then if they want to print, they can. If not, they'll have it. So that would help, too, because those add up over the course of the year.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve copier services with CPI?
So moved.
Mike Ryan, and a second?
Second.
By Jill. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, and we do not have any public comments this evening, and that brings us to the end of our agenda, so. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming tonight.